Okay. Call to order the 16th regular meeting of the Lynn City Council. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Counsel Barton?
Present.
Present. Counsel Cahill?
Present.
Present. Counsel Capano?
Present.
Present. Counsel Chakoudas?
Present.
Present. Counsel Calucci?
Present.
Present. Counsel Sia?
Present.
Present. Counsel Lapierre?
Present.
Present. Counsel Lozey?
Present.
Present. Counsel Annette?
Present.
Present. Counsel Trahan?
Present.
Present. Counsel Walsh?
Present.
Present. Eleven present.
If we could please rise for a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Counselor... Lapierre? Remember Mr. and Mrs. Durant.
I'd like to pay our respects to Eddie DeGloria, passed away this morning, Ward 6 resident, active resident, keeper of his family and our thoughts and prayers.
That's no as well. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. I'll take a motion to accept the minutes from the September 27th meeting. Motion made and seconded. All those in favor say aye, opposed no, the ayes have it. Madam Clerk, communications.
I have no communications.
We have no communications. Public hearings.
First public hearing is petition to Taco Bell. Brian, rectify for permission for assigned permit at 124 Boston Street.
I'm going to open the public hearing for those wishing to speak in favor. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Seeing no one wishing to speak in favor. I close the public hearing for those wishing to speak in favor. I open the public hearing for those in opposition. Anyone in opposition? If those testifying could state their first and last name and address for the record, please.
Patricia Dutch, 196 Locust Street. We live in the condominiums that are behind the plaza and we are concerned with the signage that it does not shine into our residences. And if they're putting up one of those larger signs that Wendy's and McDonald's have, that it appears only on Boston Street and not facing us so that we're looking at it or dealing with the light from it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in opposition? Anyone else in opposition? If you don't want to testify but you want to raise your hand in opposition, we can count. One. Would you like to testify?
I'd like to speak in opposition.
Absolutely. Come on up to the podium.
Yes. Gertrude Sally Chapman, 196 Locust Street. I've been a resident of Lynn for over 25 years and I've put up with Burger King, Wendy's, McDonald's because they're a little bit distant from the condo. But this Taco Bell is directly in sight of the condo and they have not really given us a site plan. They're telling us the signs will be on three sides of the building. We're hoping they're telling us the truth, but I have a feeling the signs are going to be higher than the building, they're going to be on quite a bit of the night, and they're going to be reflecting into our residences. We've asked them if they put up regular lighting in the parking lot to put a shield on it so it doesn't face us, but I don't think we're going to have much say in the size of the signs or how long they're going to be lighted. So I'm in opposition to the signs on the building.
Thank you. Anyone else in opposition? If you'd like to not testify but express your opposition by raising your hand, we're happy to count the audience of those who are opposed but don't wish to testify. Count one, two, three, four, five. Record reflected five individuals in the audience were also opposed. With that being said, I'm going to close the public hearing for those wishing to speak in opposition. I'm going to close the public hearing. Counsel Chakoudas.
All right, we did have a meeting with Taco Bell a little while ago regarding a few issues. One of them was the sign. I'm going to grant the sign with stipulations that it's only on the three sides, it's not facing stadium condominiums. And is anyone here from Taco Bell right now?
Do we have any Taco Bell owners or enthusiasts here?
I think they got beat up pretty good.
The other stipulation is they didn't ask, they haven't approached us, so I'm saying no to one of those tall signs like the residents were saying that...
Freestanding.
The what? Freestanding. Yeah, freestanding, thank you. Do not want that out there. If they want to do the sign on the building but where they said the three sides, not facing the stadium condominiums.
With those stipulations, I'll take that in the form of a motion to support. Motion approved and seconded by Counsel Trahan. Is there any further discussion? Counsel Lapierre?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to say that this, so far, it's really, it befuddles me that they were next door just a half hour ago on the extended hours and couldn't manage to walk across the hall next door and be here in favor of their sign. Now, you know, this agus body has yet to see any site plans or anything that even resembles a sign. And usually when we grant these signs, we at least have an artist rendition or something in our hands from this multi-billion dollar corporation by way of they want to erect a sign. And we're starting off on the wrong foot with Taco Bell, I have to tell you. I'm very disappointed in how they have navigated this process. First of all, there hasn't been a process. They've had no say with the neighbors. I cannot believe that the first time we got to talk with representatives from Taco Bell was last May during a conservation committee hearing. That's not how to do business in Lynn. They're supposed to be coming in here and as a new business, working with our neighbors and our community and putting their best foot forward. I mean, so far, they've done nothing to sort of ingratiate themselves to the city, its residents, this council. You know, I'm very disappointed tonight and I'm disappointed that, you know, we are on the verge of approving a sign we haven't looked at yet. So for that reason, I'm opposed to this. And until Taco Bell starts behaving like a good neighbor, they're not going to have me through their drive-through anytime soon. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Counsel Chakoudas?
As we spoke to Taco Bell in the other room, that was the stipulation is the sign would be on three sides of the building only. So they did tell us that in the other room.
Thank you.
And not defending Taco Bell, but it's zoned for that, so they do not have to have a neighborhood meeting or anything. They're just coming to us for ours and for the sign. We did not have the say if they could build the restaurant there because it's zoned for that.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Cahill?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Capano?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Calucci?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Sia?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Lapierre?
No.
No. Counsel Lozey?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Annette?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Trahan?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes. Ten yes.
Next petition.
Petition to Mass Telepage, Maria Suarez, for permission for assigned permit at 875 Western Avenue.
I'm going to open the public hearing for those wishing to speak in favor. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Seeing no one wishing to speak in favor, I close the public hearing for those wishing to speak in favor. I open the public hearing for those in opposition. Anyone in opposition? Anyone in opposition? Seeing no one in opposition, I close the public hearing for those wishing to speak in opposition. I close the public hearing. Counsel Capano?
Motion tabled.
Motion made tabled, not debatable. Seconded. Roll call.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Cahill?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Capano?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Calucci?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Sia?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Lozey?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Annette?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Trahan?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes. Eleven yes. Petition to Spina's Autobody, Alfred Spina, for use of autobody shop at existing auto repair shop at 164 Blossom Street. Hours Monday through Friday, 8 to 5.
Open the public hearing for those wishing to speak in favor.
Mr. President, through you to the members of the council. I'm Attorney Sam Vitale. I'm here on behalf of the petitioner Fred Spina, who's seated at the end of the first row over here on the left. The Spina families operated an autobody facility on Alley Street for over 50 years. They want to stay in Lynn and expand. They've located a facility which has already been permitted in the past by this body, the McLaughlin facility at 164 Blossom Street. What they seek is your permission to locate their business around the corner essentially and share that space. There'll be no additional construction, no additions or alterations to the building. As I say, it allows us to keep an existing business here in Lynn that wants to grow. The reason we're before you is that autobody is a permission that requires city council consent. It's in the waterfront district and therefore we're going to go next Tuesday night to the Board of Appeals and hopefully I can report to the Board of Appeals that the city council acted with favor upon this request. I'd be glad to answer any questions any member may have.
Thank you, counselor. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Seeing no one else wishing to speak in favor, I close the public hearing for those wishing to speak in favor. I open the public hearing for those wishing to speak in opposition. Anyone in opposition? Anyone in opposition? Seeing no one wishing to speak in opposition, I close the public hearing for those wishing to speak in opposition. I close the public hearing. Counsel Capano?
Yes, I met with Mr. Spina and Mr. McLaughlin. They both, both businesses have been there forever, you know, part of the neighborhood, both very respected businesses, and it's really a good fit. Mr. Spina wants to expand and Mr. McLaughlin has the space and it actually will, you know, probably alleviate some of the cars also on Alley Street. So I'm in favor of this and I'd like to make a motion to grant.
Seconded. To grant and seconded. Any discussion? Roll call.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Cahill?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Capano?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Calucci?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Sia?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Lozey?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Annette?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Trahan?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes. Eleven yes.
Motion carries.
Petition to Comcast, Timothy Broderick, for permission to intercept existing conduit on Willow Street and place new manhole from new manhole place, one three-inch PVC conduit, 45 feet plus or minus in a northeasterly direction to the property of 51 Willow Street.
I'm going to open the public hearing for those wishing to speak in favor. Mr. Broderick.
Good evening. Timothy Broderick, Comcast, 9B Forbes Road in Woburn, in favor of the petition.
Can you answer any questions you may have? Eloquent. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Seeing no one else wishing to speak in favor, I close the public hearing for those wishing to speak in favor. I open the public hearing for those in opposition. Opposition, opposition. Mr. Anderson.
Calvin Anderson, 12 Concord Street. Once again, Comcast is really not, let's say, client-oriented. And when you go home tonight, you might find, I caught the early news before I came in, but Comcast has just been fined millions of dollars by the government because of, they were flimflamming all kinds of things, there was some kind of a thing, they weren't making clear what their valued clients were actually subscribing to, and they were doing phantom charges and all this stuff. Now, they're rewriting the rules. They claim that they're going to be more customer-friendly, client-oriented. Well, let's do it because you want to, not just because you have to and ordered it. My hero, when I was living in Malden, was Congressman Markey. He took on the telecom industry like nobody else had before in DC. And I wish, as a senator now, I'd be hearing his voice more in this too. Now, I have since changed my provider and I've been exceedingly happy. Now, Comcast still didn't fix what they were doing, they still owe me all kinds of sweat equity and money, it's in the hands of the FCC now, but I'm sure Mr. Broderick's a nice guy, he can't help it that he works for the devil. Their Comcast colors are red and black. What does that remind you of? Who could it be? Who could it be? Could it be Satan? Remember Church Lady was on TV? If you can get good TV, you can get reruns. If you have a good TV carrier. Anyway, Verizon even changed their colors. They got rid of the black. I think it's just red and white now because they knew the satanic connotation they had. So anyway, until this company starts treating their existing customers better and has some contrition and starts being genuinely customer-oriented, I am opposed to any expansion by this company until they can take care of the clients that they have now.
Mr. Anderson? Mr. Anderson? Who's your carrier now?
Oh, I moved to Verizon. They have a good bundle, they actually talk to you right, and I think they're a good, rugged union shop.
Mr. Anderson? Their colors are red, white, and black. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing no one else wishing to speak in opposition, I close the public hearing for those wishing to speak in opposition. I close the public hearing. Counselor Chakoudas.
Motion to grant, as long as, as usual, as I say, put the street back in the condition it was or in better condition.
I'll second that with the counsel's stipulations.
Motion made and seconded. Mr. Broderick, do you disavow Satan? Do you disavow Satan?
Do I disavow Satan? Yeah, I think so.
On the record. Okay, roll call.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Cahill?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Capano?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Calucci?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Sia?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Lozey?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Annette?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Trahan?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Good luck. All right. The next batch of petitions, let me see, yeah, we're going to take a batch of petitions that there's no...
Seven of them.
Objection, we'll take them all at once, Madam Clerk. I'm going to open the public hearing for the following petitions.
Petition to Mobility LLC, Scott Snyder, for permission to attach equipment to a new utility pole in the right-of-way north of the intersection of Park Street and Bennett Circle on Park Street. The next one is in the right-of-way southwest of the intersection of South Common and Market Square on South Common Street. Next one is in the public right-of-way located northeast of the intersection of Washington Street and Boston Street with electricity connection and location approximate to plan. On the public right-of-way located north of the intersection of Waverly and Boston Street, electricity connection and location approximately is shown on plan. In the right-of-way northeast of the intersection of Baker Street and Burbank on Baker Street with electricity connection and location approximately shown on plan. In the right-of-way northeast of the intersection of Andrew Street and Market Street on Andrew Street with the electricity connection and location approximately shown on plan. And in the right-of-way southwest of the intersection of Broad Street and Liberty Square on Liberty Square with electricity connection and location approximately shown on plan.
I'm going to open the public hearing for those wishing to speak in favor.
Good evening, Mr. President. Members of the city council, Brian Grossman, Anderson Krieger, counsel to the applicant Mobility. Also with me is Rosanna Frante, who's the senior permitting manager for Mobility.
You can do it all at once if you want together. That's easier.
Mr. President, I know we were here a few weeks ago with a handful of petitions that were tabled and you've just read the notice for the new petitions. In general, we explained who Mobility was last time. One thing I do note about the existing, the prior pending proposals as well as the new ones is they were all submitted and advertised as 75-foot poles through really Rosanna's hard work. We have managed to bring those down to 50 feet across the board. I know that we heard the concerns at the last meeting and so we've been working on that. This new batch got submitted while we were still working on that, but so that is some good news. So it's now really very close to what you would expect in terms of overall general height for a utility pole, which is typically 35 to 45, 50 feet, somewhere in there. We know that's new information. We do not have revised plans, so we're not asking for or expecting a decision this evening. We want to make sure we get you those updated plans. In addition, we know last time, some of the information that we had submitted, there weren't copies that were able to be distributed to city councilors. Rosanna did provide additional information. Hopefully that's been shared among the councils, so I know folks were concerned they didn't even have a plan or a photo or anything to look at. Hopefully you've received that information and have had an opportunity to review it. Overall, in terms of what Mobility has on the table at this point, is I think you've read now between the tabled and the new ones, 11 petitions. We do have a total of 13 expected for Lynn at this point. So there are two more. They have not been, they may not have been submitted yet or they may just not have been submitted in time to make this meeting, but I understand there are two additional ones that we would expect to be before you in the very near future. Overall, the current plan has 13 total, 12 proposed new utility poles, all 50 feet, and then one attachment to an existing utility pole as well. We do have a map that kind of shows throughout the city where those are located, so you can get an idea of the overall plan. I don't think that's been submitted yet.
No, I do have it here, hard copy, if we would like to pass that around so everyone can kind of get the overview for a plan here.
Thank you.
We can also pass around the, what the 50-foot, this is actually taller than 50 feet, what the installation would look like.
Thank you.
I only have a handful of those, so if we can distribute them and pass them around.
So really, the goal this evening for us is to take a step back from the previous hearing. It really reset and say, here's our plan for Lynn.
If you could use the microphone, because there's folks at home this time.
I'm sorry.
That's all right.
So really, the plan here this evening is to take a step back from our previous hearing and to provide an overview as to what the plan would be in Lynn and then talk about next steps as to how we could proceed to kind of get to the different concerns of individual locations. At times, we've had jurisdictions refer to this type of evaluation to committees, to either DPW committee or license and franchising or public property. So we would love to answer any questions that you have in order to be able to make any determination as to next steps.
Thank you. I'm going to continue the public hearing for those wishing to speak in favor and then do opposition and then we'll open it up for you folks. So I would sit probably very close by because I'm sure there'll be a number of questions. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Seeing no one else wishing to speak in favor, I close the public hearing for those wishing to speak in favor. I open the public hearing for those in opposition. Anyone wishing to testify in opposition? Mr. Ameralt.
Counsel President. Good evening. Paul Ameralt, I represent the Hall Company. We manage 225, 229 South Common, which is, I think, the last one on that list. I think that you can't hear that well back there, so I think I heard that it's 70 feet now to 50. 50, so I guess 50 feet would be 20 feet, if my Lynn English education works. So it's 20 feet less unsightly. We just don't think that's a good fit, good location there where we are at the Commons. We hope the council sees it the same way we do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ameralt.
Calvin. Who are you?
Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition to the Mobile Lite applicants? No, I think, okay. Seeing no one wishing to speak in opposition, does anyone want to raise their hand if they're here in opposition but don't wish to testify? Seeing none? Here we go. If you want to testify and if you're opposed...
Opposed.
Okay, come on up here. You can state your name and your address for the record, please, and then you can, you can say actually anything you want.
My name is Marisol Sostarcha. I live at 39 Jackson. It's on the list, but I didn't hear it, I didn't hear the name. Jackson and Terrace.
It may be on the list of applications that have been tabled. One moment, please.
It is showing it on the map.
Oh, yeah. I see it.
Well, we believe that's not on the map, but that is...
Right here. Jackson Street's on there.
Jackson Street is on. Jackson Street's on the map. Yes. Jackson Street's on the map.
The pole, according to the plan that I saw, it's going to go right in front of my house. I'm on 39 Jackson. I have a daughter who's in a wheelchair. That pole is going to go like right in front of her window where she sleeps. My concern is, if something happens with the pole, falls, an electrical wire falls, it's going to go right to her window. So that's my concern about that. And when the buses come to pick her up, that's where they park. All right?
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing no one else wishing to speak in opposition, I close the public hearing for those wishing to speak in opposition. I close the public hearing. I'm going to open it up to questions right away. Counsel Trhan?
Thank you, Mr. President. I sent it to the chair to...
Come on up, folks.
Now, what are you supplying with these poles and, you know, like what are you making? The cell phone service better for, I don't know if anybody understands what for something?
Sure. As, we gave a brief introduction last time as well, but for folks who may not remember or may not have been here. So what Mobility is doing is they are building out a hybrid transport network. So what they are providing is really the backbone and transport service for data provider, data carriers to move their data. One of, a number of Mobility's clients are wireless communications carriers and so just like they have facilities that would be, that have, you know, the large radio communications equipment cabinets that are then connected by fiber and then run that information back to the switch, effectively, that's what Mobility is doing, is providing that, what they call backhaul service. Except Mobility's doing it through a hybrid transport network, so it is partially wired at some points, but the, the front end of it, including the utility pole application, is utilizing wireless. There's some benefits to that, because rather than tearing up streets to have to install long runs of fiber, in some cases, we don't have to tear up streets at all. We can pull electricity from a manhole nearby. In those cases where, you know, electric isn't readily available right, you know, through an existing conduit or a manhole nearby, the run in terms of, of the need for conduit to run from that location to Mobility is still significantly far less than running fiber, you know, completely down a, down a street and, or through a neighborhood.
Now, i- is this helping? If I could, ah, is this helping like the, the people of the city? Is this helping with us, with our wireless? Or, or is this more like you're helping other businesses, or?
Well, so we're, Mobility provides the backend service. So, whoever, whoever the client is that's providing kind of what we call the, the front end, so if it's a Sprint, or a Verizon, or a T-Mobile, or an AT&amp;T, that carrier that's providing the front end, we're providing densification for them, for backhaul, and so those subscribers to those services would see a benefit. But our clients are not just limited to, you know, the major wireless communications carriers. As I talked a little bit about last time, we are moving to really a connected economy and a mobile economy. And so, beyond just the smartphone that people want to stream their YouTube and play their Pokemon Go and, and get their email and do their web browsing, there are a whole host of things that are coming. More, as we continue to move forward, connected devices are going to be the, the big thing, what they call the Internet of Things. And so, you know, things from as silly as a connected refrigerator that can tell you you're out of milk, to autonomous cars, or, or computer-assisted cars, all, and everything in between, all of those things are going to require more and more data, and more and more bandwidth, and more and more backhaul. And that's what Mobility will provide.
Yeah, this is definitely more focused on data. This is not a voice, a voice network. This is a data, to try to, and the reason why the engineers have chosen these locations is because of the consumption and the, basically, the capacity issues that they're finding.
Sorry, the capacity issues they're finding with the data. The other thing is with this equipment, it is capable of having a combiner on the antenna, so it could be more than one provider out there that can use this particular location. So, it wouldn't necessarily just have to be a Sprint or a Verizon. It could be two, two of the carriers. So, that's a benefit as well.
Okay, now, just to expand, now, if I could, now, so now, are you gonna be putting, like, I see those poles, and then you see a thousand antennas on them. Now, are you gonna do that, like, in front of people's homes? I know Mr. Ameralt spoke about it, you know, he did it in front of their buildings. Are you guys gonna be putting all these little antennas on that whole pole now? That 50-foot pole? I mean, is it gonna become an eyesore?
No, I mean, what we've, the picture we distributed is a typical, is, is a typical Mobility installation. So, there are, you know, certain smaller boxes and things that are located on the pole. The antenna is located at the top. For the most part, they're wood poles, so that cable, it does run up the side, and it's, you know, covered by a riser, so you try to make it look as, as well-kept as possible. But, you know, certainly, it's.
Do you people have a problem if we put a stipulation on it, saying that we didn't want a lot of antennas on it?
Well, it, it's so, the, it's not designed to be like your typical pole, you know, some of the poles you've seen where you have a lot of carriers. That's not the way this works. It's one antenna at the top, and if it is to provide for two different companies, then it would be a combiner in that one antenna. So, it's a technical thing, correct?
You're not gonna have these antennas all the way up there?
It's not multiple antennas, no. It's one antenna with technology that combines the frequencies.
Okay. And then I just had one more question, if I could, Mr. President.
Please.
There was a young lady just spoke, I believe, right here. She talked about a handicapped child. Now, is there a way to move that, move that pole out of front of her house so that we'll have easy access for her?
Yes, I, one of the, one of the things Rosanna said upfront was, you know, part of this is to, to start the dialogue, and we know, you know, when you're proposing a new pole, what may look good from, you know, our investigation and vetting of locations on, on the street, something like that, there's just something we're not gonna know. And certainly, you know, either, you know, through here or through committee, to work through those details to make sure that if there is a site-specific issue that we need to work to address, that we do that.
Yeah, I just hope, you know, that you can take a note of that, please, and make sure.
I already did.
No, and I would say that one of the, one of the values that I found in working with some other jurisdictions is actually going out to each particular site and actually talking about it and saying, okay, well, let's see, does this make sense here? Is it, is there a way to move it a little bit? So, to me, I would recommend that that be part of the evaluation process with, again, not sure who the right people are to be at those visits, but it does make a big difference, and we've found, and the jurisdictions have found a lot of value in it.
Counsel Calucci.
I think, I think, I'm just, it's just cellphone towers, right? That's what we're doing here?
No, not exactly.
Not exactly. So, as we talked about last time, Mobility is a competitive local exchange carrier, and they're, and they're providing backhaul, so very much like Light Tower, or, you know, Comcast, or whomever is moving data, that's, that's what Mobility's doing, they're just doing it in a slightly different way.
Counsel Chakutis.
I have a question. Well, the pole is so tall now, what about heavy winds? How much wind can they actually sustain?
So, the wooden poles are still engineered, and so there's still, you know, structural evaluation that's done to ensure that the pole can accommodate not only the, the equipment, and that's whether, that's whether it's on an existing pole or a new pole, but also to make sure that it meets, you know, code and things like that. And the codes for different areas include things like wind speeds, and so, you know, a wind speed for a structure you're designing, you know, you know, down on the Cape may be different than something that, you know, we're designing to be located here. It may be higher or lower, but there are codes that talk, the codes factor that in, and our engineering factors that in as well.
Counsel Tron, can I ask Counsel Annette, and then go back to Counsel Tron?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a question. When you said new poles, that mean new pole you put on your own poles, or, that's, you will install new poles, is that correct, when you say new poles?
Yes, and so it wouldn't create a double pole, it would be a new pole in, in the proposed location.
Okay. And how heavy is the, the antennas?
Do you know?
I don't have the exact number. I don't, I don't want to misquote the weight of it. I can certainly get that for you, but they're not, this is not a heavy installation by any means.
It's the same pole as a telephone pole, right?
It's right, exactly. It's the same, right. So, it's an omni antenna at the top.
Counsel Trahan, now go Counsel Hart, and then go Counsel.
I just have one more question I want to, Counsel Chakutis, actually, maybe think of it. We have a lot of problem in the city with double poles. Pole gets taken down with the car, they just come and double it. Now, you guys, who do we contact if someone hits one of those poles in the winter, or when it comes down? Is that your responsibility to come and put it right up?
Yes.
So, how soon till you guys respond to us?
Mobility has a local team in place, Rosanna's part of that, and so it would be, you know, they're much more fleet of foot than, than the, the larger utilities. It would be a couple days.
We don't do it, we wouldn't do a double pole.
We certainly wouldn't do a double pole.
Okay, I just would like to put that on a stipulation, too, when we approve this, that there's to be no double poles, that if it falls, that it gets replaced.
And that would be fine.
That is the benefit of Mobility being a private company, that they can be agile that way.
Mr. President, if I can, one, Lynn is not alone in the double pole issue. We certainly are aware of it. It's come up, we know that, you know, the new legislation. And if I can, Mr. President, just to the counselor's question just before, the antenna at the top of a pole is approximately 11 pounds.
Counselor Capano has a question, and then Counsel Lozey? We'll go Capano, and then Lozey, okay. Counselor Capano.
Just one question as far as maintenance goes. This picture here is really neat. I mean, everything is lined up perfectly, everything is tied off, all the wires are tied off, everything's mounted very neatly. It looks nice as far as a pole like that could go. So, as soon as something happens after a couple months, and a couple of these brackets fall off, and the wires start hanging off the, who do, who do we, who do we call?
Again, you'd, you'd call Mobility, because they're, they're a private company.
How long is the response time?
I think you'll find Mobility very responsive as a private company.
I'm trying to be wise here. This happens to us all the time. And if you look at, you know, if you ride around the city, there's, there's why, some of these places are a mess. And it, and if we don't call, nobody's gonna come and, and fix it, you know? So, it's up to us to call, and then it's up to us to wait for someone to show up. And we don't always know how long that's gonna be, and it's never the next day, or even the day after. So, that's why I'm asking that.
In, I mean, in terms of exact response time, I, I don't have one. I, I know Mobility is, it can be very responsive in the communities in which they're locating. We are a private, Mobility is a private company. They do have their own, you know, they do have contractors that work for them, and that can be dispatched, which be within, you know.
You contract out to, to other countries, to, to other companies to do that, that work, or is it a Mobility, so-and-for Mobility that comes to do that?
Well, we do have, like, internal construction team, so they would probably manage a sub that would be doing it, but we have an internal construction department here locally.
That managed, but, but the, the.
The actual work itself.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd have to find out exactly how that plays out, but I would say that if there is a timeframe you have in mind, or something, we could definitely take that into consideration as a condition or a stipulation of some sort, to say that the response time needs to be within this window, or.
I would love to be able to call with a problem like that, with anybody, and have them come the next day and fix it. That used to happen years ago. It doesn't seem to happen anymore.
Sure, but that's something we can take back.
And, and our expectations get lower and lower. What, what we would expect in a day, you know, you might expect in a week, and then that becomes two weeks, and then, then people expect that no one's ever gonna show up for a month, and if you show up in three weeks, that's like a good job. That's why I'm asking that. If you don't have your own people, you have an internal team, that means you would have to rely on a local contractor, which you, you may not have yet. That's what I'm assuming, based on your response.
Right, yeah, we, we don't have that in place today.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Counsel up here.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just had two clarifying questions. So, my first question is, in terms of the, I don't know what the proper term is, but the, the wavelength of how these happen, like, the distance in which they might be, the pole erected, what neighborhoods, or how far of this bandwidth will this help? If you're saying, I think the proposal's for 12 new poles, that affects our whole city, will that provide coverage for the whole city? What's the proximity of the service?
So, each, it's a half a mile radius at the most.
Half a mile radius at the most.
At each pole, right. So, based on the way the, the plan is for Lynn, it might, and I'm not an engineer, but based on the way they're laid out, it seems as though that's where the highest demand is for data, or where the poles are proposed. So, they don't necessarily go that much further out than that, the area that they're in.
So, my follow-up to that would be, are you soliciting in our neighboring communities as well, like Swamp Scott, Saugus, Peabody, Lynnfield, and other areas?
Yes.
Would be.
We're working in other communities.
Would we get any of the effect once you are successful in those communities? Would we get any of the, sort of the, you know, the, the data in, if it's in that proximity? Let's say you're on Highland Ave, on 107, and Salem.
Potentially, if you're on the line, maybe, and then.
Would we get some of that?
It depends on the, it depends where it's located in that half-mile radius. So, there might be spots.
And are there any in those neighborhoods or communities at this time, or closest to Lynn that you've installed in successfully?
No, not yet.
That we could visit, or assert, you know, do a site?
No, unfortunately, right now, we are moving in all the jurisdictions at the same time. So, we're all at the same place, which is the evaluation, education, try to let, you know.
None in Essex County?
Not yet.
What's the closest I could visit one of your installs at this time?
Oh, Baltimore. Baltimore? We don't have anything here yet, right?
Thank you.
We could send you to Baltimore.
We're working through this nationally, so.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have, we'll defer to the dean, Counsel Calucci.
Why don't we just let them put them in another city first? See how it goes, and then come to Lynn?
That's a good question, that's a good question. Counsel Walsh.
Thank you. I just have a question. So, I've seen some similar equipment that's been put on poles that are already in place in the city, okay? And they have fans attached to these power pack units that kind of make some noise. Do you guys have similar power pack units that are gonna have fans attached to them to cool them down?
I don't believe there's any noise with ours, so I can confirm that, but I'm almost positive that, when I heard that myself, I was like, oh, okay, no, no noise. So, I, I'll confirm that, but I don't believe so.
I just, I just, I, I don't know if the city needs any more telephone poles, to be honest with you, and I, I don't know why existing poles that are there can't be used. Is there any reason why we can't use existing poles for this equipment?
So, our site selection team, so unfortunately, we are not part of that team to select the sites, okay? So, that's why my suggestion is, which, again, I found fruitful in other jurisdictions, is to go out to the areas and see if there is another potential site, an existing pole, rather than a proposed pole, and discuss that.
Just, just as a follow-up to, to that.
Yeah.
One of the, one of the other issues is, you know, and one of the reasons why Rosanna said it a few times now is, you know, visiting each locale with appropriate representatives of the city is one, as we talked about before, there are times where people are aware of something that we are not, but also, you know, just because it's an existing pole doesn't mean it doesn't have some of the same questions or concerns. You know, you have the, a pole location that's just outside, you know, someone's window, or just in a particular location that makes it already difficult for that neighborhood, and so adding to it, while possibly intuitive at times, would be, no, we don't, we don't want you to use that existing one. Actually, a new pole in this location would in fact be better. And so, that's one of the reasons why, you know, we've said, you know, working with appropriate folks, whomever the city council deems right, whether that's committee, whether that's, you know, municipal officials, we'd like to get with them and work with them to talk about the sites we've already selected and review them for appropriateness.
Mr. President.
Counsel Lozey.
Thank you. Through the President, I'd like to ask Brian or Rosetta, has Mobilite entered into any formal agreements with the utilities that it intends to attach its equipment to?
Yes, we do have a, we, yes, we do have an agreement with National Grid, we have an agreement with Eversource, and where we can, we do attach to their poles, because that is the least intrusive, that's, that makes sense for us. It's when there isn't that opportunity, that's when we need to go to a new pole. Now, as Brian mentioned earlier, I went back and fought my own company on getting the height lowered, because I said 75 is not gonna happen, it's not, it's not.
Thank you, Rosetta.
Right, so we came back to 50. So, now, at 50.
You answered my question, if I could.
Sure.
Has Mobilite identified the pole numbers of each pole that it intends to attach its equipment?
Well, we only have one pole where we are proposing an attachment. The rest of the poles are new.
Okay. My final question, can Mobility, given with the, the discussion we've had this evening, can Mobilite provide the city with a five-year master plan stating its current estimates of the need for the equipment, including alternative analysis, given that even you yourself, Rosetta, mentioning that it's least intrusive rather than putting a new pole, and to provide that for the City of Lynn during this period?
So, five years is, is a long time. I can tell you that I push back on the company to give me what the plan is in the near term, so that's where we came back with these 13 locations.
Yeah, see, that's just.
So, five year with technology, it's tough.
Getting your foot into the door, we need to know more what your plans are for our city, and as you mentioned even yourself, that these poles are, that placing them on existing poles is least intrusive. So, and as Counsel Walsh mentioned, it's an eyesore to have these poles up. I, I, I think at this time, I'd like to make a motion, Mr. President. I'd like to deny this petition without prejudice, because the plans have changed from what was current publicly submitted, and until a new application is submitted with the requested information, make that in the form of a motion.
A second. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Counsel Calucci.
Wait till they do it in another city first, under amendment? Friendly amendment? Well, that's, by them withdrawing this, well, or actually, we're denying this without prejudice. They can't, they can't submit another one until, for a year, I believe.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call on the denial.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Cahill?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Capano?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakutis?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Calucci?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Seer?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozey?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Annette?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trahan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, 11, yes.
Thank you.
We also have some tables. I don't know if you want to include those, or?
Also, several provisions that have been tabled. Would anyone like to take the other provision, the other applications off the table? Motion has been made to take off the table?
A second.
Seconded. All of those in favor on taking off the table, say aye. If there's no, the ayes have it, the matter's taken off the table. Counsel Lozey. On the other seven applications.
Motion to deny.
Motion makes to deny a same stipulation. Any discussion, roll call.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Cahill?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Capano?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakutis?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Calucci?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Seer?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozey?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Annette?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trahan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, 11, yes.
Mr. President, I want a clarification. The last motion, is that possible without prejudice?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any more public hearings?
No more public hearings.
At this point, I'm gonna ask for Counsel Seer to come up, because tonight is my wedding anniversary, I'm gonna have dessert. My wife.
Ooh. Happy anniversary.
Happy anniversary.
Happy anniversary.
Ladies and gentlemen.
Congratulations.
Public hearings to be set down, there's several, I'll read them together if there's no objection.
We should have committee to have them read, there's one.
Make the motion.
So moved.
Motion's made. Petition to National Grid, Chris Radzik, for permission to install two four-inch PVC conduits from pole number one to property at 124 Boston Street. Petition to Comcast, Robert Olivera, for permission to intercept existing conduit on Market Street and place new four-by-four manhole from new manhole, one four-inch PVC conduit, communication conduit, 185 feet plus or minus, in a north-easterly direction to the rear building at 324 Broad Street, to provide service to 200 Market Street. Petition at BWBC, One LLC Attorney James Moore, for Nicholas Menino, for permission to allow City of Lynn licensed mobile food vehicles to operate at Unit 18180, Commercial Street, seven days a week, Monday through Friday, 3:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. on Saturday and Sunday, 12:00 noon to 8:00 p.m.
So we should have counsel?
Motion to Adam Dom.
All those in favor? Aye. Those.
I have no unfinished business, if anybody has any.
No business.
Want to bring up?
Any unfinished business?
Committee reports. Ordinance committee, we have a proposed amendment to the zoned ordinance that's been to be sent out to the council. So we need a motion to accept a report.
Okay. Pardon. Yep, unanimous vote of committee? Motion to approve?
All those in favor?
All those in favor?
Can I take a roll call on that?
Yep.
Counselor Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Cahill?
Absent.
Counselor Capano?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Chakutis?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Calucci?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Seer?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Lozey?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Trahan?
Yes.
Absent, Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes. Ways and Means, we have several financial transfers.
Counselor Net?
Any objection to?
I want to read them all together.
Appropriate, order that the city comptroller take the following action, appropriate from the overlay surplus, the sum of $477,599.0 to fund retro pay raises per labor union negotiations. Certify as an available fund the amount of $59,625.0 as allotted to the City of Lynn Fire Department by the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security for the fiscal year 17 State 911 Training Grant and EMD Regulatory Compliance Grant. Certify as an available fund the amount to $4,014,427.0 as allotted to the City of Lynn School Department by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education for the fiscal year 17 Sped 240 Grant. Certify as an available fund the amount of $1,154,901.0 as allotted to the City of Lynn School Department by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education for the fiscal year Title II Grant. Certify as an available fund the amount to $476,224.0 as allotted to the City of Lynn School Department by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education for the fiscal year 17 Title III Grant. Rescind as an available fund the amount of $49,827.30 previously accepted during July meeting that was allotted to the City of Lynn Department of Public Works by the Department of Transportation for the fiscal year 17 Complete Streets Program Grant. And there's three other orders that I can keep separately if you want.
You can read them all.
Okay. Order that Herona, the mayor, is hereby authorized to execute all documents necessary to obtain the $2.5 million Mass Works Grant for the purpose of improving roadways in the vicinity of the new market basket. Order that the City of Lynn award YMCA Metro North the RFP for the sale of a portion of Neptune Street on the condition that the YMCA Metro North makes a payment of $75,000 on the date of the conveyance to the City of Lynn as a payment in lieu of taxes. The YMCA Metro North shall also furnish the city a bond in form satisfactory to the city solicitor insuring that the, I'm sorry, ensuring that the roadway construction is completed.[1549.12]